Good afternoon. The town of Inten respectfully acknowledges that it is located in the First Peoples' traditional lands. We recognize this traditional territory to show respect and understanding to those who walk this land since time immemorial. Today, we uphold our ongoing responsibility to work together in the spirit of the intent of the trees with all the First Peoples and nations that call this place home. The town expresses gratitude for the opportunity to build a better community on these sacred lands for generations to come. And with that, we'll call today's committee the whole meeting to order. First order of business is adoption of the agenda. Councillor, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing no changes from council administration.
No changes.
Okay, no changes. That, councillor Chambers.
I then take the motion that we accept the agenda for the April twenty second, twenty twenty five Committee of the Whole Meeting as presented.
Thank you, councillor Chambers. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, we'll call to question all those in favor. And in favor by hand, Mr. Campbell. And that is, just to be shared unanimously. With that, we will move on. Your first agenda item. Citizens minute with council. Are there any citizens who wish to speak to council today?
Yeah, Mr. Kreiner.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Councillor. Mayor. Just two items on the agenda today that I wanted to give some input to. Firstly, impressed that the town is moving towards selling lands that's underutilized in the communities. I had some concerns, however, about the zoning of some of the lands on Ruin Street. I would suggest those lots that face Happy Creek Estates and back on to Happy Creek, be residential, not commercial. So that would make only three of the first six commercial. And the rest should be residential. I believe it's very rare in a community to be over that have residential backing onto a one of our waterfalls, waterways, and that would be more beneficial instead of having commercial sitting in that strip further towards, if you want to call it McCloud Avenue. That would be my comment on that particular item. And then the second one is, I call it the fool's game of tax rates. Tax rates is just a mathematical calculation. In truth, what you as councillor have to determine is really how much money you want to collect from all the taxpayers. And you set an amount at thirteen million, six hundred thousand this year. And last year, what he will, if he'd make all the changes that are proposed in the budget amendment, last year you collected thirteen million, nine hundred thousand. So you could actually lower taxes by three hundred thousand. But I don't think that's a wise thing in the long term. I think that the town council in Hinton should determine a, an amount to collect that's inflationary each year. And then set the tax rates based on that. And your men can do the tax rate calculator. So, for example, if you collected, well, what's, what the report says, if you did zero change of tax rate, you actually collect fourteen million, four hundred thousand, which is five hundred thousand more than last year. That, that would in fact result in a five point, three point five percent increase in everyone's tax on average. So you should probably work backwards and say, like you did when you started the budget, what is a reasonable tax rate that should be applied for the citizens of him to address inflation? And if that exceeds the amount of money that you really need to operate this year, which it certainly will based on the budget adjustments, I suggest to put that into a reserve or even actually to be determined by the next council as a good new surplus next February, March. That's really probably more relevant to their planning than it is to your planning. And I could debate which of three reserves it could go to, but that's probably better done by the next council in my opinion. So I personally, as one taxpayer, very comfortable with a two to three percent tax increase, which I know will mean the tax rate goes down because the taxes, all the assessments are up three and a half percent. So determine the amount of money you need to collect, wish to collect. Don't make it as ginsy as the thirteen point six million that your budget set, because that will be, I think, sending the wrong message for the long term. I know that challenges from municipalities, inflationary exists, so don't ever go backwards in collections, even though I know there's federal politicians promising that all over. Now leave those comments with you.
Thank you, Mr. Kreiner. There anyone else here, Mr. Chief Councillor, please?
No, not on this.
Okay, thank you. With that, we will move on to the allegations and presentations. The first allegation today is Altolink Wildfire Mitigation Presentation by Colin Harvey.
Thanks, everyone, for having us. Yes, my name is Colin Harvey. I'm the Municipal Community Relations Manager with Altolink. I have with me as well Brian Kelly to my right. He's our Emergency Response Program Manager. And to my left is Brendan Mann, who's our wildfire system operations engineer. Yeah, we just wanted to bring counsel on debate on what Altolink's doing from wildfire mitigation perspective with our transmission lines. So just a little bit about what Altolink is. So we are Alberta's largest transmission provider. They were created in two thousand and two and TransAlta sold their regulated assets. Ultimately purchased the transmission side of their business and Fortis Alberta purchased the distribution side. Our sorry territory there is in the dark blue. So we have over thirteen thousand kilometers of transmission lines in that area for three hundred station. And are really the backbone of Alberta's grid. We move a lot of power, all power out to the communities that need it. Servicing the majority of Alberta. As you can see, we're a service territory in the more heavily populated areas. And we were purchased back in twenty fourteen by Berkshire Hathaway Energy. So just the kind of, this is just a diagram that just shows the pool of power in Alberta. And just so you can see where Altolink fits in, and I'll just start on the left and go through these components really quickly is on the left, we have our power generators in the province, so that's largely gas, wind, solar, and hydro. And so as they generate power, they push that up onto the transmission system, and that's where Altolink fits in. So we don't actually own the power. We just own the facility that transports power across the province. So we take the power from the generators to the communities that need it. So that would go to one of our substations where we would where we would step down the power and move that over onto the distribution side, which is Fortis Alberta generally in this area. And Fortis is, and the distribution companies are the ones that actually physically connect your homes, businesses, farms, et cetera, industrials. And then in between the distribution and consumers and your retailers, so your direct energies or your rep, whoever you use, who actually purchase the power from. So Altolink fits into that transmission system. We operate our lines between sixty nine kilovolts and five hundred volts. So it's not news to anybody at this table that wildfires are becoming more and more of an increasing concern across the province. Since twenty twenty three, Alberta's seen over twenty two hundred fires. And in those twenty twenty three fires, that led to our biggest restoration effort as a, as a transmission company, and a lot of our facilities impacted during those fires. And we have to get out and fix and get those lines back up and right. So according to the province, less than ten percent of fires started in Alberta are from the market infrastructure. But as a company, Altolink acknowledges there's still a risk that remains out there. And we're committed to making sure that our, that the communities we serve are as ready as possible. So in that light, since twenty nineteen, we've actually had a wildfire mitigation program. And we took a lead as a utility across Canada to be one of the, to be the first utility company to, to develop a wildfire mitigation. And so over that time, it's just continued to enhance and improve. And that's why we're here to show you today. So this diagram here, this wheel shows really all the parts that encompass what makes up our wildfire mitigation plan. And I'll start in the bottom left and kind of work my way around counterclockwise. So the first one is our fire threat map. So what we've done is across our entire network, across all thirteen thousand kilometers of line, we've mapped, we've used a third party to help us out, and we've mapped out areas that we would consider high-risk fire areas. So these would be areas that if a fire did ignite as a result of, of the transmission infrastructure, a more significant fire could occur. And so that, those are the areas that really we focus strongly our wildfire mitigation plan on. The next piece there with the wildfire, sorry, the facility wildfire risk reduction program. What we're doing there is in those areas, we're looking to replace some of the older equipment in there and with new ones. So a simple point, the insulators, so those are those cone-shaped strings that hold the wires. We're replacing old ones of those with new insulators. And then some in those areas too, we have wood crossarms. We're looking to replace those with steel or fire and group glass crossarms, because that can be a point of ignition. So we're just taking that point of ignition away in, in those areas. We also have enhanced situational awareness. So up to last year, we installed seventeen new weathered stations across our system. We've installed cameras in some areas. We continue to assess different memory AI tech type technology to see if there's anything else out there that we can use in partnering with the province and others as well. And then something else we do is every day we have a third-party fire expert that sends us a report for active wildfire across, sorry, fire weather across our, our service territory. So we can see where we have elevated areas of risk or concern based on the weather conditions, because obviously we have a large part of the province, so weather conditions can vary very differently. So we get that daily. With the expanded preparedness, last year, we, we worked with a lot of our municipalities to get updated emergency contact information to make sure that we were contacting the right people if an emergency was occurring. Part of that also led to the creation of Brian's role as our emergency response program manager. So that we have a focal point for, for our municipalities and the agencies as well for somebody to be able to engage with if they're going to be desktops or anything like that, or if there's an ongoing emergency. So we continue to work with our industry partners and government agencies in that way as well. We also have incremental operational practices. And what that means is in those higher risk fire areas, we're, we've increased the number of inspections we do in that area. So we're, we're watching the vegetation closer. We're also in inspecting our own equipment more often as well in those areas. And then if we are getting into extreme risk days, we have these operational, enhanced operational practices. So that all, what that includes is at our substations, we have this equipment called auto reclosers. So if the line trips or faults, those auto reclosers attempt to re-energize that line right away so that we don't lose service. What we do is we turn those off. So if that line trips on those extreme risk days, we'll get out there and assess that line before we re-energize it to make sure that there's nothing that may that may cause an ignition along that line. And then last, but not on our, on our wildfire mitigation program, here is this public safety power shut-off. And so, as I said, it is our last resort. We are a power company. We take a lot of pride in keeping the electricity from the way down our line. So this is the last thing we want to do. But if, if the weather conditions get extremely dangerous enough, that we feel there's a risk to the communities, we may look to proactively turn off the transmission line during that weather to make sure that any source of ignition is removed in that situation there. So we look at a variety of things, not just no one single factor drives a public safety power shut-off or PSPS. And this slide here kind of shows some of the conditions we look at. So the first four would be what are kind of like our forecasted PSPS. So in that situation, we're looking at, at the wind condition, the humidity, how dry the vegetation is. We're also using those cameras and weather stations to test what the real-time observations are. That may lead up to a PSPS. The last one is a bit more of a reaction. So if a fire is ignited near our line, so from a lightning strike or whatever, we may, we may also at that point look to de-energize that line so that we don't further the spread of that fire, create anything that help further that, to spread that fire in those situations till that fire is contained. So this diagram here kind of shows the process we would, we would flow through as we move it through a public safety power shut-off. So starting on the left there, as I said, we're always monitoring the conditions as we start to see that we're moving, that the weather conditions are moving towards the conditions that would create a PSPS. We move into a watch and we're watching those threat, those factors closely. Once those thresholds are, are confirmed and we know we're in those thresholds, our PSPS protocols get enacted in our inside Altolink, which also moves into a communications protocol where we'll start to communicate with our communities and also our distribution partners. We work very closely with Fortis on this. There, if we're, especially if we're moving towards a PSPS, what we do generally is, as, as a whole, from a wildfire perspective. That would take us to the point of actually turning the power off. And we would continue to monitor the situation until the, the forecasts are showing that our, the weather conditions are dropping below the thresholds. Once we do that, we start to look to energize the line. But we can't just let's turn the line back on while that line's been out. We have no data to say whether the line's been damaged, if there's anything leaning on it. So we actually have to go inspect that line. So whether that's by air, if helicopters are available, that can involve ground crews as well. And so we'll inspect that line to make sure it's safe before it's energized. And then once, once we determine it isn't, it is safe, we'll turn the power back on and then we go back to monitoring. Well, as I mentioned, part of that process is a, is a communication process where we search community with our, our distribution partners and our communities. So this, this diagram here shows what an ideal situation would be in a forecasted PSPS. Of course, fire weather's very dynamic, fires pop up. We may or may not be able to hit each and every one of these steps depending on the situation, but ideally, this is what we would like to do. So starting last year, we actually have a weekly status email. We send out to the municipalities and our, who have asked to be on our list. As a weekly status to let them know, it's a very simple email that just says whether we are or not seeing that we're tracking towards a PSPS in an area. And so that kind of lets everybody know as we go. Once we start getting into the thresholds and we're seeing that we may be doing a PSPS seven days out, we'd be letting the emergency management leads at the municipalities know that we're looking to potentially turn the power off in seven days, so that they can start to organize what they need to organize with that coming. Two to four days out, we set up our incident command structure, a joint information session. And at that point, we'd also be looking to let municipal customers know that we're two to four days out. One to two days out, that's where we would be getting notified by the public that we're looking to turn off the lines. And also make sure that the information officers from the municipalities and other agencies are well informed on what, on what we're doing and, and what's coming. Through the day, we actually turn the power off, where again, those notifications and communications will be maintained. And then when we get to the re-energization in the same light, we'll be letting the public and leaders and, and information officers know that we're looking to get it energized. When we're hoping to get that energized, how that's progressing, what, and how that's looking. So this is just the map of the town that hinted here. And the blue lines there are, are transmission lines that feed that small box just here. That's our substation, and that substation is what feeds the town. So those are the lines that, that feed into the town. This here shows, the crosshatch area shows what we've identified as high-risk fire area around the town of Inten. So you can see, we do have our transmission line in those areas, and those are those areas that were doing those increased inspections. Making sure that those lines are safe in there. And that box in the bottom left there is the PSPS weather condition. So where we would be looking to do the public safety power shut-off would be in times when the fire weather index is greater than sixty. And we're having wind gusts also greater than sixty. So both of those components together, that would be when we would be to connect that, that would be with PSPS activated. And this is just, this slide here, just give you a quick show of what we're, what we do on a real-time situation. So these, these two examples show what happens when a fire happens on the landscape. So the red lines on that, on these maps are our transmission lines. The red dots, a fire that's been noted by Alberta wildfire. And so we get this from our third-party fire consultants. So they send us this information right away. It shows the direction of the spread of fire. So we can see how that impacts our, our lines. The colors around the red dots there, what those are showing is, is fuel connectivity, basically. So is there a clear path that if the fire's moving that way, is there a lot of fuel for it to burn and get, get moving on? Or is there a lot of breakage in fuel that maybe can hold back or burn with whole fire? And we use that information to help guide our information on whether we are or are not going to turn those lines on with that fire in that area. So one thing we've been doing, we started last year in the Fire Force Protection Area. We did it again this year in March. We, we've done targeted a community outreach. So we have had a media campaign going right across our service territory this year, actually. That started in March. So we ran, so specifically in this area, we ran newspaper ads in, in the Edson area. So we also had radio ads on Boom one oh four point nine. We also had, we have a billboard that we had in March as well that, that shows these panels. And the intent of this, we also but the intent of these panels shows that we have a wildfire mitigation plan. It talks about our public safety power shut-off. That's a potential option. And provides our website as well, so that the public can inform themselves if they so should. So we're out doing our best to try and make sure people are educated and can see this information ahead of time as well. And then, so just leaving Brian as my contact. So just if you have any general inquiries around our wildfire program or any, anything about Altolink or our facilities themselves, I would be your contact for that. When you're coming up with any emergency response planning coordination tabletops or anything like that, which we would love to be a part of if the town or the surrounding areas having any, Brian would be our contact for that and would help coordinate that from Altolink's perspective. And that's our, that's our presentation. So we'd be happy to take any questions you may have about it.
Thank you very much. Any questions? So Taylor.
Do you understand how the fire shut off at work? Can you use Jasper as an example? Like, how long was there a fire shut off? Like, what would you expect for, for when the, the power shut off would be?
So I, I can't speak specifically to Jasper only because it wasn't our service territory. So that's the echo service territory. So but for us, like, once the power's off, what we tell people is be prepared for seventy-two hours. So how fast we can get that line on, again, that, that depends on, on what's going on with that line and how well. So if we can get it in a helicopter and inspect the line, fly it really fast, there's no problems, it could be a quick re-energization. If we find out there's problems with the line, things are broken on it, we'll need to get a crew out there and get that fixed. That may take days. So it can, it can really depend. We don't really have a set number on exactly what that is, but we do encourage people to be ready for seventy-two hours. And we will work as fast as we can to get that, that line re-energized.
First of all, thank you. I think, you know, your due diligence looking into this and, and making preparation plans is fantastic, you know, for our communities. I'm sure our citizens will be happy to hear it. I'm just curious on, you said that, you know, because I see we land in that area and you're doing either repairs or replacement. Has that work began? Or is that yet to come?
Have to get back to you on that. I, I don't know if we've done it at some point. I, I just have to double check. So we're, we're looking through our system and, and as money is available, we're, we're working through that. So I'm like, do you know?
So one thing I can say that we inspect all our lines annually. But because most of the lines here are in the high-risk fire area, we do already increase the inspection to at least twice a year. So that work has already begun. But in terms of component replacement, that is again, something, you know, there's an order of work to be done. And yeah, so we have to check to see if, if there might be nothing that needs to be replaced as well. So that's something we can get back to you guys.
No, I appreciate it. I mean, understandable, and it could be done, but you know, or it could be already have been done, but you know, it's just, we're in that sense of already, you know, so and, you know, next thing you know, the next storm.
But it's good to know that that work is being done in our community. So appreciate that. Thank you.
Councillor Ross, maybe? There's nothing further from the committee. Just want to thank you one more time for the presentation today.
Thank you very much for your work.
Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Thank you.
We'll move on to our second delegation, which is Beaver Boardwalk Reconstruction Presentation. The demonstration.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thanks again. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I do, of course, the administration, you mentioned that if there's a request to be on the mailing list, as we requested that for getting information along the way to be part of that list.
I wrote it down. I'll be back.
Yeah. Okay. Through the chairs. So we're all safer. We also have a contact. You know, as an example, with Edson, Altolink, we're ourselves, we're close on that. So we do work closely. Okay. Awesome. Thank you.
Councillor Ross.
Thank you all for entertaining an update to the board this evening. For the Beaver Boardwalk Community Oversight Committee and was provided to them on April ninth by Heather Mark, who's overseeing the day-to-day work out at site. She was unable to be here this evening. So, give me. So the pictures that we have here span the, oh, I see. The entire duration of the project, starting from kickoff. So you'll recall that the contract itself was for two frozen seasons, since most of our work is required to be done under frozen conditions to maintain the health of the wetland. So they could have started in December if it hadn't frozen enough. However, that was not the case. So we started in January. The kickoff meeting held on-site was January thirteenth. Shovels in the ground on January eighteenth. Our environmental monitoring contractors, they were there from the eighteenth of January through to the thirtieth. And then again on the fifteenth and sixteenth of April. More on that later. The pilings, which we'll hear more about, also finish up around March second. So in this image here, this is just showing some of the safety precautions that were required. You can see along the side here, we have the geo, the geo cloth or geo matting with the rig mats on top. Of course, the wetland needs to be frozen in order to support that. You will also note approximately two hundred cones in the corner here. Those were necessary to kind of lay the pathway so that this gets to your new where to bring the mats. And then you can kind of see the, the rig up here moving the various mats around. This bottom photo just kind of demonstrates some of the challenges that arise sort of as we go based on the conditions at the time. So there was obviously a bit of melt thaw that had gone on, making removal of the boardwalk a little bit tricky. And you can see how it had gotten sort of frozen into the ice here. So they had gone through removing most of the boardwalk pieces that they could. And then they kind of move on to pilot. So we did have one section that was sunken and frozen into the wetland. They weren't able to find some creative solutions that fell within our environmental approval to remove that section. And then they move on to pilot. So there were approximately seven hundred and fifty galvanized sixteen-foot piles to support the, the decking for the boardwalk. So you may recall that our previous piles were wood, which was what, and they were not spoon piles. So that's what was causing the heaving of the wetland and, and the slump. So we've replaced those with galvanized steel approved for the wetland. Here you can see the start of the framing. And that goes on top of each of the piles. So there are a couple of locations, namely out there where the the old floating dock used to be, as well as the far west sections, U and V, where the piles remain in this condition, but taller. That's because there, there's no way to know how far each pile will go. So they go with the sixteen feet and then cut them off. Certain sections, they haven't moved on to the framing yet, and I'll touch on that later. But most of the boardwalk, except for those, those three areas I just mentioned, have been piled. And the framing began here, and this was on And the, um, framing began here and this was on March fourth through eleven. Once they have sort of the face frame, they continue framing the actual pathway of boardwalk. Um, this just shows the difference in the weather conditions as we move through the project. Some days super springy, other day is very cold. Uh, we did have that cold snap that had it down, um, kind of in the minus twenties and thirties and therefore the crew did decide. Not to go on those days. They have a small crew and didn't want to risk illness and things like that. Um, so no work was done during those that week. So the stain for the, uh, deck material was approved by the. Uh, environmental consultant and was put on by West Fraser at their plant in Sundry, rather than Sundry. Um, and we shipped all the way up here to the tune of, um. The amount of framing alone was the equivalent of six homes. Um, so all of that was treated before it arrived on site. With the exception of the pieces that would form the part of boardwalk that you actually walk on, those needed to be cut to size. Um, and the size, the sundry platters didn't provide that as easily. So we decided we'd cut them. Um, once they arrived in doing that, that means that each of these end pieces after the cuts. Weren't treated. So those had to be done by hand. Um, most of them were done in the shop. Um, thank you to Northland Maintenance where we, uh, they were able to store all of our wood for us. Um, and so you can see here that they had to paint those on by hand, and then they had a dual abatement for anything that had to be done on site to ensure that no drips. Went into the snow that then further melted into the weather. Uh, this picture here is quite interesting. Just you can barely see it, but under here, these are the rig mats. So you can see how. Difficult they might be to remove at a later date once they're filled with snow and ice and frozen and stuck in. Um, been driven on a couple of times. It'll just shows the changing conditions out there at the boardwalk. Uh, this decking wood was brought in in advance, knowing that we can only work in the wetland to a certain. Date, which is the sixteenth of April. Uh, at that point, they can do work from the frame. So all of the decking that had to be laid on top was positioned in place. So that they could pull the rig mats out, get everything out of the wetland, make sure it's all nice and tidy, and then they can carry on. Uh, doing the top decking. That is allowable beyond April sixteenth. This part of our maintenance plan is the kind of work that our parks crew does. On a regular basis out there and is part of our maintenance approval. Uh, this was taken on April thirteenth. The the framing and how that was moving along. This section has now been decked as well. Uh, that's when the pieces go on top. So this is from the fourteenth and fifteenth, noting that we had to be out of the wetland. Um, by the sixteenth, they were out of the wetland with our environmental folks in there confirming that they had removed all their materials. Um, by four P M on the fifteenth, they were out there. There's some sections already here, just showing them in their relatively completed. Um, state. There is, uh, some kind of finer details that still need to be completed. I'll touch on in a moment. Now this took off April sixteenth. And then this is the map that was last released, um, to the public with an update. So this was prior to April sixteenth. The yellow sections were the sections that had been framed, but they hadn't yet had the decking put on top. Um. So we expect potentially by tomorrow. All yellow sections with the exception of J right here will be complete.
First day I didn't see.
Oh, right here. Is where the floating dock used to be.
Well.
Um, and the reason that that one's not. Going to be completed in this frozen, um, time period, but we have to wait until, uh, this upcoming winter. Is we needed a a variance on our environmental plan because the piles required some welding. And we didn't have the approval to do that in the wetland, only offsite. We had only dripped, we'd already driven the piles before we ran into that bit of a snag. So they are leaving those uncut. So they are quite tall. There is no framing on it. The the reason we haven't done the framing there as well as the sections. Over here, because once you do the framing, it really starts to look like I can walk on that. Uh, we just for safety reasons, you don't want people climbing all over it, um, prior to the decking actually being in place. Um, so section, um. B and U as well as J will be completed under our next frozen cycle, uh, which could be as early as as December. Um, with the final completion, uh, by April, same time. That's when it has to be on the wetland. So at this point, I can take any questions if there are any.
Thank you.
Just for the community, because the question came up, you know, last time we had done work in the Beaver Boardwalk area. So everything was accomplished within the, uh, the. The plan, the environmental plan laid out and agreed to with, uh, with, uh, the.
That's correct. In fact, um, our environmental folks had planned to be on site here for the duration of the project. Um, however, based on the the way things had gone in that, uh, first span of days, I think from the thirteenth of January through to the end of the month. Uh, the environmental consultants were so confident with the plan and the work that was being done that they, um. Granted the contractors the ability to continue on, only need to be called back for, uh, special variances and things like that. Yeah.
Thanks so much.
Thank you, Counselor Ross.
Yeah, to add to that too, which saves some money on the project as well, because there was a plan for that. Environmental consultant to be there during the entire project. So that was a good, uh, good part of the project. Um. I just wanted to touch base. First, I want to confirm, because originally, when you said all of the yellow should be done. Like the decking is done, like you, you were talking about all the yellow.
The decking will be complete likely by tomorrow.
By tomorrow. So they're way ahead of schedule because originally it was May eleventh. That they would potentially be in there decking, um, but, uh, that would be done tomorrow and access to the community. That's fantastic.
So access won't be provided likely until May eleven due to the fact that they do have, um, some angling, some corners, some edging. Uh, some sharp edges, things like that. They're going to do a good cleanup. Um, but if they finish that early, of course, we'll let the community know and we will have an updated. Map go out as soon as we have an update from Heather who's on site.
If you could also move back a few slides, one to the where you started the the pilings. I just thought it'd be interesting to show. Um, that that one. So that's how far the boardwalk shifted. As you can see there where there is a pile, the wooden pile right there, that's how far it shifted. Uh, over the years, uh, through all the heaves and everything. So I just wanted counsel to see, you know, the what it's. What it looked like before being fit. So that that'll eliminate with these filings that happening in the future, obviously. So. Um, the other thing I wanted to point out that it was interesting, if you go up to where they were cutting the frame. The other way. Keep going, keep going. Where is that one? So where is that one that, uh, they showed the angles of it? Oh, there is. Yeah, I missed it. So all of the cutting was done offsite. Uh, down to that precision right there, that angle that, uh, you see there, they did all the measurements and, uh, they did it everything offsite. So that they could be faster and didn't have to catch everything, uh, cutting it on site. So that was all done and I appreciate. Uh, this, uh, way you say that Northline's maintenance was very helpful during this project. They, uh, allowed us to store all everything on their property and cut as well. So it was great. Um, but that's, you know, the level this contractor, I understand, was extremely knowledgeable and, uh, very. Uh, good at what they do. So.
You can see that there is some sawdust here. They had to come along, um, and sweep any of that up. It's not allowed to be melted down into the wetland. So. There is still quite a bit of, um, tagging, um, that they're going to do, especially when they go and. Uh, do some of that edging. So they'll be, they may have a different mechanism depending on how, um, thawed the wetland is, which may include. Um, sort of like pool noodles with a tarp so that it can catch anything and then that has to be pulled offsite.
Thank you. Can you go to the map? So yellow, we're going to be able to walk on on May eleventh. But there's two, uh, colors that blue or purple. Like this Y and this G G purple. So G G purple. You know, you got my feet wet when I go to the bridge this summer?
You'll recall that that we actually put in a removable temporary section there, um, so you can traverse it currently. Uh, the reason we went removable and why that's slated for later, um, is because depending on the type of work, we wanted to leave. The ability to remove the sections on the rig mats can get through without having to damage new boardwalk. So that's why we went. So that one will come at a later date. Um, the other blue sections, this is a tower, this is a small bridge. Uh, these we've recently determined may not require piles and these, uh, were sunk in. So they weren't part of the original scope. Um, section A, B, uh, R and S were not part of the original scope. Um, so we're still seeking funding at this point to get those pieces wrapped up.
Why else will be usable?
Uh, why is in decent condition when they come back next, under the next freeze, we're going to be looking at, uh, that section.
So this, this G G is going to be a temporary thing. You'll be able to ride your bike on that or will you have to get off and on your bike?
No, it's in great condition right now. You can already, that was completed last year, maybe last year, last year. Yeah.
Okay. Or ride your bike, but they'll get wet. Okay.
You counsel.
Yeah, just, uh, I guess this way, um. Don't think we told council, but with the 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 grant that we went and seeked with the chamber in conjunction with the partnership with the chamber, if you can.
Yeah.
Comment on that.
We were not successful in, um, the seat up grant that we had worked on with the chamber, uh, however, currently revising that application. Um, and we'll be resubmitting. I'm also working with our corporate liaison officer to determine, we have a. Long list of other grants that we're going to apply for, uh, so more information to come.
And if I may just, and that grant was specifically the tower was targeted in, right? So that's what it was the last of the. You know, replacement of it. So, you know, nothing is going to be jeopardized on the entire boardwalk with the the loss of that grant, but. Uh, appreciate that more grants will be applied for for that. So thank you. What are we going to have instead of the floating dock? Like, there'll be a a dock area where you can, like, stand?
Yeah.
Okay.
It just won't be floating. It'll be on piles, um, with no railing around it. It'll still be a deck, but not floating.
Okay, no rails.
Correct.
Okay.
There's nothing further. Finish the minutes. Thank you very much for your presentation. And we will move on.
Thank you. Sure. I will turn this over to, uh, Winston. Yeah. So thank you for the opportunity to bring us back to this would be. Uh, the fourth time that we can move this to council. This is not because we haven't made any specifically made progress. We started this on December the tenth, twenty twenty four. We were back here January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. And then we had a special with council as a workshop on February the twenty seventh, and tonight we are here to summarize. All that was discussed at the workshop. So in short, um, back in January, we had five options for council to consider. Uh, as an option to deal with these publicly owned lands, which is power law plans. And the landed on option three. And so we bulked the strategic session on option three. Which basically talks about several parcels of land that is market ready, be meaning it's flat, meaning it's some of this basically serviced. Some of them are serviceable. And so that's why we call that tier one lands. They are the lands remaining still that will come forward to council at the later stage, which we call tier two. Where there are a few more challenges, maybe not as serviceable at this point. On further subdivision and more majorly sort of type of result that needs to occur, that it that it needs to to happen. There is a why we brought this forward to council back in December the tenth was to try and get some traction on getting some lands to to the market. Tonight, which I have for you is the tier one lands that was discussed at this event since February twenty seventh. That basically suggests, uh, the best zoning options. And and if I may just touch on to the delegations, the clients talk with us, that the C node does allow you to have as a discussion in residential use. So we have not basically blanked it out that we're going to have commercial as a strip. So. Point duly noted, but I just wanted to ensure that also realizes that you still have a discussion to use under the C mode, uh, for residential. Um, with that, we've suggested that if council is of the appetite to move this forward this evening. That we could then start the process of an expression of interest. Not to sell the lands, but an expression of interest to solicit local realtors or realtors to say. That could then market these lands for us. Of course, there will be a negotiated percentage that will be spelled out in the E O I. Once we have our realtors finalized, and it could be all of them, could be some of them, depends on the responses to the E O I. They will then market this for us. And of course, they'll be paid a certain percentage for bringing something to market. We'll also advertise it on our own website, and should there be inquiries to administration. We'll bring that to the realtors that are dealing with on our behalf. So with that, I'll pause for any questions. The information is all here. We've got on your on the page thirty or fifty. We've got the various parcels that we have made proposed zonings for it. Uh, I'll just add this as a final sort of comment before the table opens up there. The the way the zoning was chosen or suggested at the strat session was to make or somewhat tied into what the surrounding areas. Are like, we don't want to change the character or change any sort of introduction of something that does suit. The current zoning and surrounding. So with that, put it back to the chair.
Thank you, uh, Counselor Ross.
Um, just to clear one thing up before, uh. Make the recommended action, uh, in parallel to, um. Going out to the realtor for E O I's will be rezoning these these as well at the same time, correct?
That would be correct.
Okay, perfect. So I'd like to, uh, make the the recommended action, the community direct administration to proceed. And commence with rezoning and subdivision of the subject. Uh, subject in the lands developed into tier number one parcels and bring to the future regular, to the future regular council meeting as discussed. Um, and if I could quickly speak to this, um, we had a a full conversation during our workshop or strat plan and, um. You know, these are, you know, this is a different way of doing things that we're not used to, but I think this is. Uh, in the right direction to get some action in those areas to get proactive, uh, with rezoning. Um, and then having the realtors on days on on side to, uh, assist in trying to market those lands. So I'm looking forward. Uh, to both of those processes, uh, moving forward. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ross. So can we do that a direction request?
Uh, yeah, I have a number of questions. Um, so just starting, uh, with two or one McLeod Avenue as an example. Uh, that style of culledan island, uh, in a residential area. We've seen this in a number of, uh, areas in the community. Um, and you had just mentioned that the goal was to sort of, uh, maintain the character of the neighborhood. So I guess, uh, my question is, have we had any high level discussions about? Uh, what could potentially be done with those islands that sort of still maintains the character of the neighborhood? But. It's a little more isolated, a little more landlocked. So I I guess, what I'm having a hard time, um. Imagining when I looked at that is what a development might potentially look like in those, those neighborhoods that have that feature.
So just go to the chip to council. We haven't had that depth of conversation yet. But what we did, as I alluded to it, is that whatever the character is around that example you just mentioned. That we would seek to ensure that the architectural standards would of course fit. I will ensure that parking facilities will will not impact existing housing that surrounds it. And then we look at the densification of what that would mean, meaning that will impact your parking, or could we have a road that is sort of. Separating the units that you're proposing that will help us to have onsite movement other than surrounding movers that make noise, noise or other type of pollution. So we haven't fully walked through that. I think the first step for us is is to see what is the uptake to the advertising that you are going. to the advertising that you are going to do. And of course, we'll have to put some parameters too that you just can't say it's open to the market. So those are some of the things that would be our next step to really grind into each of these that you're looking at, as an example.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, from a historical perspective, um, can anyone on administration speak to? If there was a particular function in that design, like the two oh one McCloud Avenue designed throughout the community of Hinton, was there a function to that um green space island outside of being visually appealing?
So I, I don't have enough tenure, I've got four years here with the council. I don't believe in my time I've seen anything, but I would believe that while planning department to come back to council to confirm if there was any start of all things that was submitted. Uh, anything that may be in our archives that may in, in actual fact answer your question or address that.
Yep, thank you.
Is that a different?
It's a different one, so.
Hey, um, expression of interest, no, that seems like something that you guys would use for like a big complicated project. Not for the sale of a simple chunk of land. Like, why can't we just take most of this land, assign it to a realtor and people can uh bid on it like they would? I wouldn't sell my property with an expression of interest. Why does these simple chunks of land, understand maybe you're gonna sell the golf course or something where value isn't necessarily one of the things you're looking at, but for these simple chunks of land. Or say for the Roman Street property, maybe you just go to the guy that owns the tire shop and say, okay, these two lots are right near your business, obviously you're crowded, you need to would you like to buy these two chunks of property? Why are you, why, why is expression of interest so important when these, these small unwanted chunks of land?
Yeah, so through to the chair to Counselor Taylor. The, the first is transparency, this is not us selling the lands right now. This is us giving all realtors in our community and beyond whoever is eligible and licensed to do this, to respond and say. And secondly, is to, to expand the opportunity to get them to talk to potential investors or people that would be interested in buying these lands, so we're really marketing ourselves be beyond just our area of interest. So the short answer is transparency, and secondly, this is for realtors to be, come on board. Because if I go to the A, the realtor C may say, well, wasn't I given the opportunity to also? So that's really the key, that you want to give each realtor, especially in Hinton, the opportunity to say, I'd like to participate. And if they meet the criteria, that's going to be part of the E O I. So the E O I isn't, I don't want us to get lost in what an E O I is to say that this will be big lands, and E O I is simply a backup saying we're inviting you to express your intent or your interest to participate in this potential opportunity for you.
Yeah. So the expression of interest is really a competitive process for realtors to uh say uh how, what they're gonna sell the property for, like, we'll give you a discount, so we want to get your business, something like that.
I mean, we're, we're, we're going through to the chair, we will have to have a market value for these properties. We could maybe decide among ourselves as council, you want to start at X percentage under market value, and that's the lowest that you'll go. So they need to know that information to be able to market that for us, we can't leave that discretion up to a realtor.
No, no, but I was saying, the only thing they would negotiate with either P, like, we want this business bad enough that we will give away two thousand dollar break in our piece or each one of these ones.
That's good, yeah.
Okay, that's what we're looking for.
Yeah.
Okay, understand that.
Uh, thanks, so regarding one forty three Rowan Street, uh recently council uh made a decision to carry on providing recycling services to the community in the interim. Uh, essentially as, as we have been, uh, what potential in, if this direction that's now on the floor was supported by will of council, then went to regular uh council and was, you know, supported. How would those potentially conflict or not conflict, because one forty three is the local uh recycling sort of hub for the community?
What, what we did was, is through to the chair, is that these are lands that are going to become available, so uh, you know, by going out to to bid on E O I process, this is going to take us at least, say, four to six months before we know the interest. I mean, in terms of the capital withdrawal, there's no immediate sign to be corrected, because some of my colleagues on the table may have worked with this. Uh, we'll then move elsewhere, and then if we free up these lands, then it's already part of the realtor's bag of potential lands that they could market, they all just have to bring the one segment back. So we haven't really divorced ourselves of their own recycling set that's there, that's there right now. But should it have to change hands, should their owners move elsewhere, which like could be the case, then these lands are freed up for this proposal.
May I follow up? Uh, please, yeah.
Uh, thanks to the chair, so the Rowan Recycling Center by rezoning, it can continue to operate as it is, as an ongoing forming use until something major changes, or, you know, if we eventually look at the future relocation, then they would convert to whatever zoning council puts in place, but the, the recycling center can continue as is for as long as we, we decide that we want those same services.
Well, yeah, please, and so, and I apologize, just looking for the certainty for the community. Uh, would that be a decision of uh council and administration to make any changes? Like, I just, oh, yeah, perfect, yes, okay, sounds good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Magoo. So I had a couple of questions regarding timing, um, we've indicated that the uh E O I process to gauge interest fifty, forty, six months. Could you explain that timeline, that seems prolonged?
Yeah. So the premise that I was suggesting, why four to six months, doesn't mean that E O I would take that long? If we get councils go ahead, parallel to the first reading occurring for the first reading. We could put that E O I out, give it four to five or six weeks, enough time for responses. And then the realtors work then start there once they are selected two weeks after that. Then for them to find that out to their contacts, that's the four to six months that I'm talking about. And just from past experience, when you're looking at a potential offer. You know, you're looking at about a forty five day window, that's how to put an offer, we may want to counter that offer due to certain conditions one that's been put in there by us or by the potential purchaser. So by the time the deal is closed up, you're basically at a four to six months process.
Okay, so to follow up with that then, when does the when does the component of, uh, we talked about design criteria that was asked earlier, to make sure whatever's built there options existing neighborhood and fits in well, there's also conditions that we talked about as a group regarding development timelines and repurchase the property if the timelines aren't told. When does that part get developed, so potential purchaser is aware of all those things before they make an offer?
So through to the chair to yourself, Counselor Stashy, is that these things, the minute we get the approval to go ahead here tonight in terms of the E O I. That process starts to be able to determine what is our turnaround time, what is what we want to accept, so the E O I would say that you should, if whatever your proposal is, will have a three, three year timeline to build. Meaning this is what day one means to you, so all those things must be stipulated in the E O I, so that there's no surprises to the person responding, the proponent. And to us that we have said to them that our lands are going to be developed, and if not, we'll turn it back to the town.
Thank you. Uh, Counselor House?
Yeah, uh, thank you, um, I just want to circle back to that E O I process, just to understand a little bit too, is that E O I process will also expand outside of Hinton as well, correct? And it'll even potentially to land buyers potentially as well, um, you know, knowing that these lands are, you know, looking at potential sale, that's going to be, so it's going to be broader than just Hinton, correct? All right, okay, thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
I'm sorry, I'm a little confused, I thought the first step in doing this was to do the zoning. So we do the zoning and then uh generally speaking, it could be a variety of things that will go into that chunk of land. And then we would be out of the process, then you do a, you've got who you want to sell the land. But the public knows that uh if it's, if it's owned as C note or whatever, if it's owned as residential, here's a list of things according to the uh area structure plan, that it could be in that area. So, so that, and that avoids some of the problems we've had with development in the past, where we've uh got, we got the development, and then we do the zoning later, and then everybody doesn't like what we did with the Gulfport Seaters.
Through to the chair to Counselor Taylor, is that what we talk about the E O I is the component of getting the realtors on board. But land is not being sort of going to the market yet. So the clarity is, is that you're gonna have an E O I that's gonna have realtors respond. And we're gonna sign them up, how many they may be, one or two or three or all of them. And then the planning stage in terms of first reading, that will be your next, at the council, coming in the future council, the first reading. And so the zoning will go through that, until the zoning is complete, we can say it is now zoned X Y. And then they can start marketing, so, but we need to get our realtors on board as well at the same time while the subdivision is running. So we're not advertising our lands here. Either the E O I, something working with our realtors, while the stage one, be it first reading, second, third reading occurs in parallel to that. Now, we may have a little bit of a gap between the time that the realtors are approved and maybe second, third reading occurring and final reading. But no lands are being put out for marketing prior to zoning being completed.
Counselor Taylor?
So the zoning could be complete without people knowing necessarily exactly what's going to get built there.
That's correct.
That's correct, it'll be based on the zoning and area structure plan.
Okay, yeah.
Because unless we can get uh the public to be open to zoning, that's the land, you get all the realtors you want, but they don't matter.
Yeah, yeah.
Ready? Any questions?
The chair, I may just uh for, for the clarity of the motion that's on the table. The motion that's on the table really speaks to that, what you'll see coming to the next regular council is going to be the first round of first reading. That's not bringing this back for the motion, so typically what our whole team can do after this evening depends on where the, uh, the decision goes. We will be starting the, the background work on the E O I, the E O I process for coming back to council. Next time we see infill lands come back to you will be based on first reading on these subject lands.
Counselor Taylor?
So, and then when we do the zoning. Everybody who lives in that, uh, like, some of these properties are decided, we get like that notification that that property is getting zoned, and there's what it could get somebody.
Okay, Counselor Taylor, committee. Any questions? If there's nothing further, we'll call the director, best question. Committee direct administration to proceed and commence with rezoning and subdivision of the subject infill lands development tier one parcels. And bring to a future regular council meeting as discussed. Maybe if you could please vote now. That is very, you know. Just before we move on, I have a question, so do we have an idea of what regular council meetings might be coming forward to? But this could see, there's another to pop it up in this.
Through to the chair, I'm, I'm not quite sure, we'll have to uh touch base with our planning department, and I see on the schedule of all these lands, whether we're gonna batch it or bring it forward uh one by one. This McGlott might have some additional information.
Yeah, um, we put together a plan and bring, bring them all forward, but they may not come all at the same time. Uh, the Scout's Hall property actually has to be subdivided, not just rezoned, because it's actually part of the pipeline as well, and that needs to be subdivided also, it's more, that, that one is a more complex uh property to, to get done, so that one will probably be behind the last as we need hope to get some.
Do you have an idea, like, are we talking a month, six months, a year?
Oh, I would say the easy ones would probably be two months-ish. Other than behind that.
Counselor House?
That was one question as well, thank you.
Okay, committee, anything further before we move on? Counselor Taylor?
You just want to clarify, you know, Mr. Fryner's comments, when you look at the Rowan Street lots. There's four of them that go across the parking lot, so that seems like commercial was his point. And then there's all these ones, including the Rowan's recycling that go against, you have to create development, which makes more sense to be in residential. So even if we do uh commercial, no, there's still be residential. Is that what you said?
No, um, no, it wasn't what you said. It's up to the chair, so basically the discretionary use for the C note does include for residential development, so as we go to public input. That is what will drive, so we will be zoning it for the right, but we will then making sure the use of it is in accordance with what the public wants for that land. So by going C note, you're not excluding residential. So the public will have input, we will listen, and we will of course be guided by that.
Good. Chair, if I could maybe just a little bit more clarification, the C node zoning uh authorizes residential for above um, above a ground level commercial building, correct? So it's a, it's a mix between residential and commercial, not just a single residential, so it's a different type of residential, though. But it can, uh, there can be some element to it. Yeah, it's also.
So of course.
Oh, yeah, um, so it is uh residential dwelling above street level and multi dwelling unit, so it could be a multi dwelling unit. Yeah.
Ready? Counselor House?
Yeah, because if I recall, it's been a while, but that conversation, it's a great place for that opportunity to have a, 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 a commercial type of business, but then have part of the issue of some employers having that inability to find housing for their employees, so having then that residential above, you know, that option, so, you know, these these were some of the things considered during that time that we talked about, but again, we'll hear from the community on that, but yeah, thank you.
So if the public says we want single family homes on this part of the Rowan Street uh thing that's opposite happy creek estate, we will be able to accommodate that with the zoning.
Yes or no?
Yes, yes, okay.
Okay, thank you, ready? Right, nothing further for that, and we'll move on to twenty twenty five spring budget adjustments. Administration. Thank you, Chair, and I'll pass it on to Ms. Borbo.
Uh, good evening, committee, we're before you this evening uh with budget adjustments, so from the time period when the budget is passed in early December to now, it's been a number of uh transactions that have occurred, administration has become aware of it, and we want to do many forward because they do have a impact to the uh budgetary numbers. The one most of note is the increase in our revenue sharing agreement with Yellowhead County. That will go up uh six hundred thousand dollars. The uh two year wildland urban interface grant will also increase our revenues this year by five hundred and seventy thousand. But you'll also see expenditures of five seventy, so it's uh, it's not a money making one, it's meant to, the grant is given, meant to be spent. We also, subject to finalizing the audit, have increased our uh conservative approach to some of our revenues by increasing deployment revenue by three hundred thousand, which would including the motion made last year, would then say that we're looking at having four hundred thousand in deployment revenue being utilized to offset the budget. And we've increased investment income to two hundred thousand, which still seems low in consideration of what our final uh investment income was this year. But as we move forward with the capital projects, they're on, we're gonna have less money in investments, so, and if interest rates go down, then we don't want to be leaving ourselves short for that. Uh, on the expenditure side, the uh, of course, the wildland urban face grant. Um, if we move forward with uh taking a adventure for the water meter installation, we'll have a one adventure payment in here. Uh, there was a contract for services with the. Uh, there was a contract for services with the A P C A signed in twenty twenty five, excuse me. Uh, sixty five thousand dollar increase to the nine one one dispatch calls, which uh. Seems very significant in conversations with my counterpart at Yellowhead County. They are doing um. Some renovations this year, so they're having to have all of their nine one one staff travel to from generally Edson to their secondary location in Evansburg. So they're. Having a huge increase in travel costs. They also being a twenty four seven operation are finding staffing challenging. So they have budgeted for some significant overtime. As well as W C B rates um for the type of work that they're doing are also very, very high. Uh, we have made the assumption that with the uh increase in revenue through revenue sharing. That uh we could put the climbing wall at the pool previously proved by council through as uh. Funds generated through the operating budget. There's some small incidentals that are in the thirty five thousand fifteen of that is. A contingency for our cybersecurity event. Most will be covered by insurance, but as we're bringing everything back online. We just wanted to have a little bit of room to make sure that we can cover all of that off. Uh, council approval of moving forward with the award to uh Foot Hills Recreation Management Association. And then also included is a reduction in operating costs for the Rowan Recycling, an estimated amount. Of further reduction to the R C M P contract costs. Now that while that seems quite low for the size of the contract, when we did budget, we had already reduced for one position in the budget. So. This is just a slight further reduction. And then we also have factored in a reduction in fuel costs for the year. So all of those um. New revenues and reductions and expenditures. Has us now requiring to generate municipal taxation of thirteen million, six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty seven dollars. And with that, I will take any questions.
Yeah, thank you for that, committee. After questions, it's okay, we're in Madison.
This statement here, budgeted adjustments before council also includes five hundred eighty five thousand, four hundred and thirty two. Increase to late slated requisitions.
So.
What's that?
I'm sorry, through to all of committee. So that would be the increase to our education amounts that we collect on behalf of the provinces increases to the Evergreens Foundation. And a little bit of an increase to our designated industrial.
Okay, so that's that's uh, that's kind of separate of the off of municipal taxation.
Absolutely separate from municipal taxation we collect on behalf of those agencies.
Thanks.
The council, Taylor, Madison.
And again, through the charity administration, what were the assumptions that led to the reduction in fuel costs for our budget?
Uh, through to all of committee, we reviewed the um billings from. Where our fuel is purchased from and we did about uh seventy five percent. Average reduction and uh claimed at uh about seventeen cents a liter. So that total would have been approximately eighty four hundred liters, but we're closer to eleven thousand liters a month. And then multiplied through to show the reduction.
Through the chair, we 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 looked a little bit closer at fuel cost, uh also in part due to the uh, the or the the cancellation of the consumer uh carbon tax. So that was a big reason looking at our fuel costs.
If I could follow up here, uh. I think the reduction in the consumer carbon taxes effect on municipality is something that our citizens are interested in. Is there any any further details you can? Uh, any further like you can shed on that specific issue for the municipality and how it's affected us?
Through the chair, I'll I'll look to Mr. Fortbowl, but it it's very early days, so we don't know for sure. I mean, gas prices are reflected almost immediately, but I don't know if we have. Um, an accurate accounting of anything else uh or the services that we have or they. Or have those impacts. So I'd look to Mr. Fortbowl there.
Uh, through to all committee. So this was. Wanting to, if we are, when budget was prepared, we were looking at fuel costs being around a dollar forty per liter with our average usage. And we uh went through a number of invoices and came up with. What I hope is a very representative of a. A low estimate of our fuel usage and then took again a very, because of the day that we were doing this and talking about it, I think fuels at about one twenty four. And we do have uh further discounts that are available to us depending on some of our purchases through our purchasing programs and that. So it's again, um. It's an estimate. It's trying to recognize that our costs may be reduced specifically for fuel as the cost of comfort going down. If we aired on this year doing it, um. Then. I will hope that this smallest amount of it being, you know, under uh. Seventeen thousand dollars, so under twenty thousand dollars, we'll be able to recoup in other areas of the budget that maybe we didn't spend our full months.
Thank you. I'm sorry, David.
Memory is of the next one point that we look at our um. Our electricity, the electricity and natural gas bills uh pre and post uh carbon tax and seeing what sort of savings those are for the next year.
Now, two to all the committee, that wasn't done during this exercise. That was done um last year when we were going through the budget. For the year and we did a in-depth analysis of everything on it. And I believe that a. Term agreement was signed in three years.
Okay, so. There are no savings in that area. That's what you're saying.
Due to all committee, not this year, no.
Yeah.
The council, David, many? Any questions? Directions. I'm sorry, David.
I noticed that the budget surplus is not included in this uh um spring budget analysis or adjustments. Again, why is that? Why would that be? We had a surplus that we went through the budget a week ago, and there was a surplus of uh three, I forget the exact, you know, three or four hundred thousand dollars. And uh, I know the accountant tried to tell us that that uh that was a confusing surplus, but uh. Nonetheless, the sheet said that there was a surplus of three or four hundred thousand dollars. So I thought that was gonna get put into a non-restricted uh account, uh you know, uh account. So why wouldn't we be looking at that under the revenue adjustments? It's a bit something like.
Uh, through to all of committee and that is, that is definitely, so the surplus that was identified has been directed to the reserves for the town. Uh, should. And and that is in the twenty twenty four year that will come forward again to uh council. In looking at the the reserve policy and moving forward on it and the. Identification of how you want those reserves allocated and to the for which projects and which uses. Um, if that is committee's. Desire this evening, we can certainly request to have additional monies from the general operating reserve to come forward uh to offset. Some of the tax requirements for twenty twenty five. Um, partly, there was already the unknown and. Surprising change to the uh revenue sharing that we have with yellow county of six hundred thousand dollars. So. Um, it honestly didn't cross my mind to bring that surplus forward because I know it's been put in the reserves at the end of twenty twenty four.
You follow?
The call. Yeah, it's just that in the past uh councils, I've spent a lot of time talking about the surpluses and how we're gonna use the surpluses and where we want the surpluses to go. So in this case. Administration has decided the surplus is going into the unrestricted reserve, or that's the process without any sort of direction of council. Now, if council's comfortable with that. That's fine, because I won't, I won't be around very long. But that's a big chunk of money to get put away to an unrestricted reserve. And we've spent a lot of time talking about surpluses and where they go and what they're gonna get used for in the past. So.
Your cao, I was like. Yeah, through through the chair, uh the surplus has always gone into unrestricted reserves. That's just the process because the money has to flow into somewhere. Now, from there is where council can have a discussion about where we want to allocate the funding. Uh, so we do plan on having that discussion as a part of uh larger reserves discussion and where we want to allocate it. If we also want to talk about it in relation to this year's budget um and our tax rates that were. Um, that we're setting. We can certainly do that for the tax rates and but really what we're talking about is how much. Of our twenty twenty five budget do we want to offset by current reserves? But the but the reserve decisions and where that money goes will be a council decision when we allocate that funding.
Thank you.
That's like us. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Just a quick question on the uh R C M P contracting costs. Realizing that we did, you know, with the the decrease, but there is a current motion to to look at. That contract um and uh. One, looking at the contract as in, you know, the 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 positions that are not that are on leaves and everything, how can we manage that? But also the. Potential of of unfreezing one of them. With this reduction, is that gonna? At all impact the decision uh when that comes to the council discussion?
Uh, through to all of committee, we took that knowledge of knowing that that is coming forward into consideration, which is why it's the uh smaller eighty nine thousand. So there is still funding within the contract in the budget that should something else change and move forward will be okay.
Excellent, thank you.
Council, us. Anything else again?
Yeah, so uh, I'll make the recommended action, the committee reached consensus to bring recommendations for twenty twenty five spring budget adjustments. Forward to the May sixth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of council.
Okay, council, us, if any, we do have a direction request. If there's any comments, questions, or anyone would like to speak to the request. So, Peter.
I support it. This is really fantastic news. I mean, we got a million bucks that we didn't count when we're having the uh. We're having the uh discussion and a lot of it seemed to have been anticipated because over six hundred thousand dollars with the uh. Linear taxation. So. This is a a great situation to have. The question is, how are we gonna use that?
Something good? Yeah, I'm just building off that. That's exactly it. I guess my question for the cao, I I heard you say that. You know, that would be a few, we could have that as a future discussion of council. Uh, where some of these additional funds uh should utilize or where they should go, for example, the um. The stuff flowing out of the unrestricted reserve. Does administration need direction from council to assign that to an upcoming meeting? Or can we just expect that that'll be? Part of our process moving forward?
Uh, no, through the chair, we actually have that discussion uh planned for.
True, doll committee, I it's very close. Um, I don't recall exactly which meeting that we scheduled before, but. In our minds and our discussion, it was the budget adjustments, the tax rates, because it's imperative that we um. If we don't have our taxes, our tax notices sent out in early May, then we have to move our penalty deadlines and everything else back, which is so. Uh, it's coming very shortly.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chair.
Council, any, anything else? I haven't seen nothing else from committee. We will call question and direction request. Your committee reached consensus for recommendations for twenty twenty five spring budget adjustments forward. To the May sixth, twenty twenty five regular meeting of council. Ready if you could please vote now. That was very unanimously. Maybe is there anything or then anything further on the twenty twenty five spring budget adjustments before we move on? If nothing, we will move on and to twenty twenty five tax rate discussion, administration.
Thank you, committee. Um, so before you this evening is the report. Taken into consideration that the budget adjustments as presented would be uh agreed upon with committee. And on the attachment. For the uh, sorry, the attachment that comes with the direction request, the twenty twenty five rates of taxation worksheet. You'll see a box over on the uh. Right hand side, which because of the increases of our assessments, uh page forty three of fifty, I believe. Apologies, because of the increases of our assessments, we could. Generate enough money to fund the thirteen million, six hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty seven thousand dollar budget by decreasing. The tax rate from where it stood in twenty twenty four. And that would fund it. If we do a zero percent increase to the twenty twenty four tax rate, we generate. More than we need for the budget. Based on the increases to assessment. And we have also included the three percent increase to the twenty twenty four tax rate as that was the. Uh, not necessarily direction, but the conversation surrounding some of the the discussion that we had during budget preparation. A three percent increase to the twenty twenty four tax rate does in uh increase revenues by one point two million. Down at the very bottom of that page, you will see how. These tax rates would affect the rate payers in terms of dollars. So if you own a home in the valley that was assessed at three hundred and sixty four thousand in twenty twenty four. That assessment in twenty twenty five is three hundred and seventy thousand. So if a tax levy percent decrease of five point four percent is. The wish of council, then based on the assessment. That rate payer actually pays less than they paid it for taxes in twenty twenty four. Moving along the page, if it's a zero percent increase, you would pay slightly more than. What was paid in twenty twenty four and that the three percent increase to the twenty four, twenty four tax rate is. Again, more than what was paid in twenty twenty four. The after having uh taken the committee through these sheets, if there's uh any questions, I'm. Happy to answer them at this time.
Many, we got your questions for the tax rate discussion.
Also, us, so going back to that, so unclear, so in twenty twenty four in the valley. Person paid two thousand forty four dollars. If we were to do a tax, Olivia, three percent, they'd be uh an extra hundred dollars. At twenty one. And if it was in the valley, it's a couple hundred bucks. Is that, is that how reading this card uh correctly?
Through committee, yes, that is. And that is, this sheet deals only with the municipal taxes. Um, just remembering for all of our rate payers, we will also be collecting funds for. The other requisitioning bodies and those I can give you some very. Um. Increases to the school requisition. Is about thirty six dollars per hundred thousand of assessment. So if you have a four hundred thousand dollar home, multiply that thirty six. By four. Uh, about forty four dollars per hundred thousand of assessment for non-residential school requisition. And Evergreens is at two dollars for one hundred thousand of assessment. So those are. Just kind of the dollar amounts that our rate payers are going to be looking at in addition to whatever municipal rates that we're setting.
But I may, to clarify that though. Because I understand and and that's, I think, a very important part of this process. Their community understands that those are not collected. Dollars towards the municipality that is provincial dollars that are collected. So that we have no con- control or whatever over over that.
That's right. Maybe that is correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Also, like us and uh, council, then there is some.
Thank you. Through the chairs to administration, you voted thirty six dollars per hundred K assessment through the school and two dollars per hundred K assessment for Evergreen. Was that the increase from last year or is that the total of what those amounts roughly were going to?
True, doll of committee. Thanks for allowing me clarification. That will be the increase of what they're looking at this year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madison. Also, we're doing.
And I apologize, I. I had a question that now I'm looking at it. I I really wish I had emailed yesterday. So if it's something that you don't have an answer to right now, that's fine. And I also want to say thanks to administration for the the quick response to the. Uh, the tax levy question that I had yesterday as well. Um. Do we have an overall average uh assessment change for the community? Uh, in the assessed value of properties? Because that's, I mean, for our citizens who are out there. That's the one thing that, you know, it's really important to understand that as a municipality, we don't. that's the one thing that, you know, it's really important to understand that as a municipality, we don't pull, you know, it's a third party assessment that looks at the overall value of the property. But we as counselors, I think we're very aware of the fact that it impacts our taxpayers because ultimately it, it impacts what they're going to pay, uh, and their bottom line at the end of the day.
So in very here to all of committee, so in very broad, um, picture look of it is just under the, the first box that we discussed showing the impact to the three different tax rates. We have compared the twenty twenty four residential assessment to the twenty twenty five residential assessment, and it is an average of three point seven six. Um, now some of that may be a little bit of growth. I would have to come back to you with that little countdown and I see C A O is, uh, ahead of me on this one.
Uh, thank you, Chair. So I, I don't have the, the breakdown of the percentages, but, um, of our total increase of assessment, for residential only, or are you speaking to the total? Um, the total increase to residential assessment is, um, or that is related to inflation is thirty eight million and the total, um, increase to inflation as it relates to growth is, uh, a little over five million. So it's, it's a mixture of the two between growth and inflation, but it's primarily, uh, increases to the market value of the homes. Right? And I, I believe that was three point three percent on the inflation and point five.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, with no one else in here, I'm going to ask a clarifying question then. That very bottom box on the left hand side where it shows Valley Residential twenty twenty four and then in tax paid in that twenty twenty five, the amount change year over year. Is that reflective of the change in assessed value in the valley and the hill? And then, uh, retail, non-residential, I'm assuming that's professional, non-residential? I guess that's an addendum to my question. What is off non-residential?
True to all of committee, I, it is a non-residential classification, but it's a professional service. That's the, the role that we've chosen.
Yeah. So then, yeah, so back to my original question, I mean, it's first to, uh, the Valley Residential shows a change of, you over here of one point six five, is that the change in assessed value?
True dollar committee, yes.
Okay, so one point six five for Valley Residential and five point two for Hill Residential.
Correct.
And that's just assessed value then? That's got nothing to do with growths?
No, true to all of committee, that is just comparing the two assessments for particular properties.
Thank you. Council Taylor.
Yeah, I have a consensus I'd like to put forward, but, uh, um, concern I have of the recommended action is that the recommended action, if you look at net municipal taxes from one year to the next year, is actually a six point three percent increase. Even if you look at this table that we've been looking at at the bottom of the page, when you look at municipal taxes paid to these folks, you know, eighteen thousand and then you go for the tax levy, three percent increase, I don't like mill rates, uh, because they don't distort true taxation. That goes up to nineteen thousand five hundred eighty six, that's an eight point one percent increase, you know, and, uh, non-residential to two thousand six hundred and forty four, that goes up to twenty eight sixty one, that's an eight point two. Um, it's only sort of, uh, a tax rate that we discuss with the public during the budget process, when you get down to the, uh, three hundred and sixty four thousand dollar house, which it's two hundred and forty four, which goes up to two thousand one hundred and forty, which is a four point six. And when, and when I went to talk to the public act, we had those budget discussions in December. I went to talk to them about a four to five percent tax increase. I didn't go to talk to them about a six point three or an eight percent tax increase, so that's a concern. So a consensus, I put forward a consensus. A consensus that I'm seeking some discussion on or hopefully maybe your vote is that council, um, seek consensus to set a residential mill rate of blank and a non-residential mill rate of blank, I'll measure this later, to collect fourteen million, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of net municipal taxes. And, uh, the surplus of approximately six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars would be placed into a mill rate stabilization fund. So what this is, is this is a two point five percent increase to the net municipal taxes. And, uh, that, that adds up to about three to four hundred thousand dollars, uh, uh, increase. And then, uh, because we took that million dollars and we brought, we brought, uh, we brought the, um, net municipal taxes down below what we paid the year before, there's another two to three hundred thousand there. So that's six hundred, six hundred and forty thousand, six hundred and forty, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars that can go towards a mill rate stabilization fund. And the thing I like about a mill rate stabilization fund is that's the one thing that every year causes us, uh, potential trouble is when the tax rates fluctuate broadly from one year, one year to the next. Um, this also provides basically about a two point five percent, uh, increase in taxes, which is well below what we talked to the, we only talked to the public about. So, um, yeah, that's what I'm proposing.
Thank you, council. Anyway, you're, you're going to have to repeat your, uh, dark.
Well, well. Sir, can you fill in the blanks for me?
Sorry, through the, through the chair, uh, the net municipal taxes, uh, you, you had that at a specific number, uh, can you repeat that for me, please?
Oh, I'll say the whole thing.
Yeah.
I'll do the blanks, believe the blank. I mean, the council seen consensus to set a residential mail rate of blank and a non-residential mail rate of blank to collect fourteen million uh, two hundred and seventy thousand dollars of net municipal taxes.
Three hundred and seventy, sorry.
Yeah. And that the surplus of, uh, six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars to be placed into a mill rate stabilization fund. The intent is that that fourteen thousand two hundred and seventy thousand dollars is a two point five percent increase to the net municipal taxes that we paid in two thousand twenty four, according to the budget document that we approved last week. So that, that, that's, that's the intent of that.
Through the chair to, uh, councillor Stewart, I may not be able to help you right off the top of my head on the blanks. I had a, a different number based on my calculation, so, but I can say that, uh, if we're, if the aim is that we're looking to get to fourteen million, two hundred and seventy thousand, uh, that would be approximately a one percent, uh, decrease to the, uh, to the mill rate, just, uh, just looking quickly, uh, but we'd have to get the specifics, so, um, so possibly if we could just say to set a residential mill rate, um, and then we could take out the specific rates, uh, for the time being, until we can do that calculation, uh, to collect fourteen million, two hundred and seventy thousand.
Yeah, and a couple more comments, like, but the actual amount of taxes, the municipal tax that we picked last year were thirteen million nine hundred and nineteen thousand. So that's, uh, fourteen million, two hundred and seventy is two point five percent higher than that. And the reason why I'm proposing to put it into a mill rate stabilization fund and not put it into like an asset management plan is that when we talked about utility rate increases, this comes from a Q and As for the utility rate increases. They, part of those utility rate increases were, uh, paper old infrastructure, in particular, the water and the sewer line rehabilitation projects. So we've already set aside money for that. And, uh, we have yet to see, uh, the results of the utility, uh, condition assessment. Two hundred thousand dollars a year we're setting, we're setting aside for underground. That's excellent. So when we start seeing the results of that, hey, we can start putting more money into some of that asset, uh, management plan. So that, that's sort of why I didn't like putting it there. You've already put a sizable chunk into that this year. They put that forward for your consideration. Thanks.
Hey, thank you, councillor Taylor. Maybe we do have a direction request if there are more questions. Sir Chambers.
Thank you through the chair. I think this is to administration. I don't fully understand how a mill rate stabilization fund is works or is utilized. I just thought I could probably do that.
Through the chair, uh, y- yeah, so it's, it's relatively common practice because what, what we end up doing on a yearly basis is we, we do this, but we pull out generally out of our, uh, just our operating reserve. Um, this is just a little bit more of a transparent and clear way to, uh, put money aside to make sure that year over year, we're not reacting too, too far on the good or the bad based on, based on any year. So by, in the good years, the theory is that you put a little bit of money aside in the tax rate stabilization. And then if the next year, your assessments decrease, you're not, you're not jumping around with your mill rate. It's, it's relatively stable, uh, over a period of time. Like I said, we do that, but we do it out of our operating reserve. This is just a more transparent and clear way to, uh, the budget.
What's, so this is a proactive versus reactive way of doing what we're doing.
Good, thank you, Chair, councillor Chambers, maybe. Council review. So, and I just, and I realized that Advent isn't prepared for these numbers, so I'm just, you know, if it's back in a cocktail napkin math, that's okay. Um, so the, when I look at the three percent increase to the twenty twenty four tax rate, uh, I mean, the net municipal taxation revenue is called four point eight million dollars. Uh, councillor Taylor is recommending, uh, or pardon, fourteen point eight. Councillor Taylor is recommending a rate that's fourteen point two million. So I'm seeing a difference of about, uh, six hundred thousand dollars. Is that, is that correct? And then if that's correct, I have follow up questions. Who, who's that question to specifically? Either actually would be either the interpretation of administration or councillor Taylor. I'm just trying to get a, understanding of the impact of taxpayer. Council Taylor.
The number you're comparing it to is a number that we set in December, which is fourteen point six. The number that I'm comparing that to is the actual taxation for two thousand twenty four, which is for thirteen million, nine hundred and nineteen thousand. Um, and that, that number is two point five percent higher than the thirteen million, nine hundred thousand. Fourteen million, six hundred is just what we decided through, through the budget process, right? And then the number is thirteen million, six hundred, because they found a million dollar savings. So truly the thirteen million, nine hundred and nineteen, which we approved last week, the, uh, consolidated financial statements. And the attempt is just to raise that two point five percent.
You got your, Mr. Chair, you listen?
Thank you. Through the chair committee. Mill rate stabilization fund, uh, from my mind is, is already an activity to do. If we want to formalize that up, I'm, I'm fine with it. Uh, but I'm not going to be in support of any uh, tax rate that decreases our mill rates. I'm more than happy to support a zero percent increase to our mill rates. The reality is the mill rate is what we set. Going backwards on the mill rate just makes it harder for future councils. And to councillor Taylor's make believe math, but not talking about the, it's, uh, assessment, or adding an assessment increase with mill rate, you're not really talking about taxation increase because part of that assessment is growth in our community. So I would like to stick to the conversation about mill rate. I'm interested, is there a percent mill rate increase? And I will be supporting any below that. Thank you.
Madison, maybe. Council Taylor.
When taxes based on mill rates, as Mr. Brian, our very experienced down manager indicate, has potential to hide the two, the true tax increase to minority here. What the citizen truly cares about is how much do I pay this year? Versus how much do I pay that? That's not reflected in the mill rate because that has to be multiplied by the assessed value. That's, that's, and it's not make believe math. It's, it's real math. Thanks.
If you can, sir, Taylor. Many, any comments or questions? Council room. A question for councillor Taylor and, and perhaps even the rest of council, um. For myself, I consider I could be potentially swayed to support this. Um, but I think I would actually need, uh, the direction request to be split. And as a, a question to administration on that point, so part of this direction request is uh, that it designates that the surplus of six hundred and forty seven thousand dollars, uh, be placed into a mill rate stabilization fund. Is that? I just want a little comfort. Is that something that we have the authority to direct uh, at committee of the whole, or is the understanding of administration that this is simply a recommendation that would come through to uh, regular council for ratification, uh, or, you know, finalization? Uh, through the chair members of council, yeah, what we would do with this motion at committee at the whole is when we plan to come forward with our reserves discussion, we'll bring this motion forward as well. And, uh, for council to include, uh, the specified amount into a new, uh, a new operating reserve or, uh, no rate stabilization. So we, we would bring it forward, we'd incorporate that into the discussion for council to ratify a regular council. Your council, we're doing. Yeah, actually, I gotta, if I may, Mr. Chair, um, just to keep things simple, I'd actually request that we split uh, this direction request that's on the floor, because for myself, uh, there's two contingent working parts to this. Uh, the concept of the rate, mill rate and collecting four point two million dollars. And then subsequent to that is what to do with that surplus afterwards. Uh, which, I mean philosophically, we just talked about this with the last item. Um, that could be a whole action item on, uh, future committee of the whole agenda. Um, and I have a number, a number of potential solutions or uses for that. In no small, one of them being the rec center and the future of the rec center. Uh, and in fact, I've already received comments from citizens about that. So I, I would request council support in splitting that so that we can deal with them separately. Thank you. Thank you, council. So we do have a motion to split. Anyone answer questions on the motion to split? We, so now we will call question, the motion to split, the motion. Direction. Point of order, um, Mr. Chair. At the last, and I apologize, I think it was regular, uh, council meeting, there was some measure of question, uh, whether or not in relation to Robert's rules, uh, a request to split was a debatable motion about my understanding from last meeting is that it is not a debatable motion, that a request to split is non debated. Good. Great point of order. I can't wait a minute to look to administration.
Uh, thank you, Chair. I was hoping you didn't call me because I can't remember what I I remember I said originally, um, if anyone else has a better memory than than I, than I really appreciate it, but I could certainly, uh, um, pull that up in the procedure by one.
Council review, perhaps a break while we maybe have a chance to look. Here, we'll take a five minute recess. Sorry, everybody.
The suggestion would be if nobody has any objection, why not just allow it? Anybody has an objection, let's lock it up.